It's scheduled for discussion.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we move forward then? I guess any concerns, other topics, outside topics people need to talk about? The pedestrian safety crossing at the west edge of town is up and operating and, you know, was pleased to see, you know, the nice quality there, so that's good to see finally have that, that piece, so thank you to our staff for all the work they did on that. Let's jump right into our scheduled session, which starts with the Chapter 11 question.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and Council. I am Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney, and I have with me Kathy Rodiker, our Finance Director, and Patty Nelson, our City Engineer. Let me...
And I'll just say, we've already done a work session on this, but there's one issue that Mayor Knapp wanted more focus on, which was, we had, our staff had proposed removing the SDC deferral or installment payment provisions from our code, and the mayor was concerned about doing that, so staff did come back with some language to allow for continuing installment payments. That's the way the council wants to go, so I think that will be the focus. Correct?
Correct, yes. That'll be the bulk of the presentation, which is relatively short, so we have time to talk.
Yeah, sure.
So, just as a background, why we are here generally is, Chapter 11 hasn't been amended since 1994, and the League of Oregon Cities recently did a model code update, which we felt provided us a good opportunity to look back at our own code and see if there's any room for improvement. As the council may recall, we did have a work session on March 18th, 2019, about the proposed revisions. So, the key revisions particularly is to the SDCs. That's where you really see the substantive changes. We've revised how, when SDCs are calculated, when they're due and payable, the applicability of SDC credits and refunds, how that all works, and the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit waiver. There's also some other housekeeping items with regard to deleted or, we deleted outdated provisions. We updated some provisions just to match what the city policy is now. We restructured Chapter 11 generally to put what we see as the most commonly used provisions first, which are the SDC provisions. So, after the, at the March 18th, 29 work session, 2019 work session, there was a discussion about the installment payments and deferral of SDC payments. So, current, what you see up there is the current language with regard to installment payments. It's just one paragraph. It's pretty broad and essentially says that the city manager will decide what collateral is satisfactory for an agreement to, for installment of, installment agreement for SDC payments, and that we will, you know, record a lien against the collateral. And that's about it. So, we felt like that there needed to be more parameters put around an installment agreement if that's what we, the council feels is appropriate. So, if, on page 131 of 192 of your packet is the red line of the installment payments that we've drafted in subsection six, and so here's how we've structured it, is first is that we will allow SDCs to be paid by, through installments for up to $100,000. So, an applicant may have more than $100,000 of SDCs that are owed, but it would only be for the first $100,000 that they'd be able to get an installment agreement. There would be a biannual payment, so every six months, and then the payment needs to be completed within two years. We originally were going, were thinking about tying it to when a certificate of occupancy occurs, but that fluctuates depending on the development and how that process is going. So, for one applicant, it could be much shorter, and for another, it could be much longer. So, we figured, we felt that a standard timeframe of about two years, which my understanding is most, most developments should receive a certificate of occupancy within two years. So, that's why we went with that. We also want to make sure that we have an interest rate that is established as the prime rate plus 2%. So, one of the things, one of the concerns that staff brought up was making sure that when we are collecting SDCs through installments, that we are trying to keep them going at the same rate that costs are going up, because when we adjust our SDC rates, we do that based on an index. So, we feel like if you're going to get paid, if the city's going to get paid through installments, we need to have an interest rate that is somewhat reflective of how costs are also going to go up. And that way, we're not essentially allowing somebody to pay less than what they would otherwise have to pay. We also...
Also, when we recently did this borrowing, the rate, if it weren't, if it would not have been a tax exempt borrowing, it would have been prime plus two.
So, and we're going to continue to require that there be collateral to secure the installment agreement, and to the extent that a lender is, there's like, there's a lender with a mortgage on the property, that lender has to approve to the installment agreement. That is mostly actually to protect the owner, because most agreements, most mortgages require that a lender consent to any changes in the collateral. So, it's really a way to protect the owner from, from violating their own mortgage. We also are going to require that council approve the installment agreement, and this is essentially to make sure that there's a check going on, that, that we are consistently applying this policy, and then we will record the lien against the property after it's approved by council. So, that's what we've done with installment, the installment agreement section. As council will note, we did not include the option for deferrals. It's staff's recommendation that installment agreements should be the only allowance that we provide. There's a few reasons for this. First is that installment agreements do allow that flexibility that council, it sounds like council is looking for, but also is making sure that the city continues to receive SDC funds, SDC payments, whereas a deferral agreement means that the city receives no funding during that time, which could mean that we start to lag behind what we need in our SDC funds. Second, there's a higher risk that an unsuccessful development ends up paying nothing into our SDCs, and we are left in a situation where we have no ability to collect, and we haven't collected anything. So, we've really recommended just to stick with the installment agreements. I think Kathy can touch a little bit on our SDC funds generally, and why it's really important to continue to receive payments into those funds as required. So, the next steps that, that we have is we have the public hearing tonight, and then we have the June 3rd council meeting for a second reading. We've set out the effective date to July 31, 2019, to allow for more outreach to be done to the community, making sure that we're getting changes in the Boons Ferry Messenger, that they're going to be posted online on our website and, and the like. So, Kathy, do you want to touch on the SDC funds?
Sure. As, as of right today, we have about $21 million, and I'm looking at water sewer and streets, because those seem to be the ones that this would affect the most. If you recall from our budget meeting, we have a $247 million five-year forecast, of which 101 million of those dollars would be funded by SDCs. About 50 million of that is parks, so we know that we have to do something there. But, there would be about, I didn't write that number down. It's about, it's the $48.4 million is what the water sewer and streets SDC projects are for the next five years, and we have 21 million on hand. As it currently stands, we're looking to, having to borrow about $10 million next fiscal year in 2021 for the water SDCs, so that we can get that expansion project done. So, that's kind of where we're at. We have good balances, but we also know that we got, you know, big projects coming, coming up.
And I think that's why staff originally recommended no deferral or installment payments, because if you don't have the money, you're borrowing the money.
Well, that and the risk factor.
Exactly.
And I might just add one more point. So, we also looked at what times the city has offered installment agreements or deferral agreements to developers, and we, there are only five, and four of the five did installment agreements, and one of the five did a deferral, and I think we all know which entity that was. That was the Subaru dealership. So, we'll, we'll take any questions.
Well, I think I should speak to this a little bit, because I was the one that, that spoke strongly for a reconsideration of some of the factors. I think this overall approach is a lot better than the, "we're never going to do it at all" approach that was offered to start with. There are still some things about this that I think are in need of a little bit of massage. I'm also feeling uncomfortable, because I have used this process in the past personally, and I could envision circumstances in which I would use it again in the future. And I'm not wanting to be arguing as mayor for one thing or another, when it might be construed that it was for my personal benefit at some future time. So, as I've told a couple of you on council, if, if we're going to do this tonight in front of the council meeting, I'm going to recuse myself, though I don't think there is a legal conflict of interest. I think that public perception is important, and that being the case, I will hand the gallipoli to Council President Akervall, and I will step down and probably speak as a public citizen of Wilsonville on this issue. So, I'm not real clear how much I should say in work session here tonight. I guess I would like to at least point to a couple of things. To me, the 100,000 makes sense, the prime plus two makes sense, the need to file a lien and be sure it's valid makes sense, all those things. I'm not sure that having to contest within 10 days makes sense. When you receive a building permit, and you've got the contractor on hold, and you've got all these other things happening, and you get a permit, and you're trying to all of a sudden get all this construction work into gear, to have to say, "Nope, leave all those on hold. I've got to research and get somebody to advise me on the legalities of the SDC appeal, and whether I've got grounds, or whether it's sufficient enough." To me, that's not realistic. It's just from a practical standpoint, not realistic. So, to me, I'd far rather see something like 30 days, or 45 days, or something to, to do that, because there are so many other things that have to be done, that there's dollars riding on at that point in your development. So, that's one issue that I, I have a concern with. The, the ability to do installment payments over two years is an improvement in my mind. From a small business standpoint, if you're stretching to create a small business where you didn't have one, and you're, you're, you're really a small business, you've got no cash flow. There's no money coming in. Until you open the door, there's no money coming in. So, the ability to stretch it out to, over a period of time that you finally do start to have some, some business cash flow, I think is important. Two years is brief. It goes fast. Three years would be 50% better than two years, in my mind. I think having a quantifiable set of criteria, instead of just saying, "Well, you think we should do this? You think we should not do that?" I mean, I, I think the criteria are far better. If there's a quantifiable set of criteria, I'm not sure council should be put in the position of whether they're going to approve one applicant or another applicant. Seems like the criteria should be applicable, and could be clearly defined as whether an applicant meets or doesn't meet the criteria without council having, but I don't know. I mean, other people may feel differently. The deferral thing, I, I guess I'd like to be clear, I, the SDCs become due for issuance of the building permit.
Correct.
If it, so you've got to come up with that money then, and it may take you for a small project, you know, two or three months, for a bigger project, six or eight months, you know? So, you're having, as a small business person, to front that money, again, with no cash flow. The longer-term approach would be to do the installment plan and be able to pay it off over a couple of years. If it's not quite that big, you still have the same issues, and to me, it seems to me like the city would still have control if they were willing to defer until the certificate of occupancy was issued. At the certificate of occupancy point, the business is much closer to being able to open the doors and have some cash flow. So, whether that's a couple of months on a small project, or six or eight months on a bigger project, if it's still a small business, seems to me like a deferral from building permit issuance to certificate of occupancy, the city would still hold control of being able to have a lever to be sure they got paid at that point, and that, I mean, maybe there'd be some criteria that would be appropriate to go with that. I don't know exactly what those criteria would be, because we haven't really explored that. But it seemed to me, if you had that, you'd have a short-term option, option for a small business, and you would have a longer-term option with the installment plan. So, you had a couple of ways that a small business could approach it, in which the city could facilitate the ability of a small business to go forward. I don't envision this for corporate business, or for large business. I don't know how you control that exactly, but I'm unsure. I guess the last thing I would say is that, 3:59 on my email, I get a letter about SDCs from the home builders. I haven't had a chance to read it. I don't know what's in it. It just feels to me like there's still questions here, and I don't, I don't know what those are. And, and so, here we are, kind of still trying to construct this boat, and it's on the, on the agenda of the night to sail, and I'm just not sure I'm, I'm confident going out in the boat, which I'm not sure how it works yet. So, I mean, that's kind of my position, and that's the sort of thing I will elaborate on downstairs. But please, other people, if you've got, Councilor West?
I was the other member of the council that really agreed with the mayor on this. I brought up very similar concerns at the last meeting. I look at the city and the type of business that's here, and I'm, I like all business, but the type of businesses here is, I don't see enough of the mom-and-pop restaurants. I don't see enough of the mom-and-pop businesses, and the, and the person making that risk and stepping on a faith that they have a great idea, and they're a small business, and, and making that investment in our community. I can go to other parts of the state and get that boutique, really great, small-business vibe. I don't get that vibe here. We have a great business community, but we could use more of that. And my father was a small businessman, and I know what it was like for him to have to deal with these real questions that the mayor brought up. And I actually like the deferral process. And I like it because of that same reason, of that large capital that's due upfront, and you have no money going in or out. And three months to that business owner is a huge deal, and relatively to the city, we're fine, in my opinion. And not to say that that money's not important to the city, or we are not, we shouldn't be paid, but I want us to have a really collaborative, and competitive, and small-business-friendly environment in our city. And if it means that the guy trying to open up his amazing little hobby shop, or boutique restaurant, or whatever his business might be, or her business might be, might want to choose Wilsonville, because we're attracting it and making it easier for the little guy on the rail to be part of the, the economic ladder. And I, I, I like the three-year version better on the, on the lending also. I like, maybe, I don't know if we can do this, this probably is a Barbara question, where we do limit, like, what's available to what size business. I don't want to see one bad actor sour the opportunity for so many good people that did it the right way, and partnered with, in an ethical and good way with the city, because those are the type of people we want here, and the type of business we want. And I'd like to see us look at this just a little bit more. I think we have an opportunity here to use this as a tool to be competitive in the small business arena, and I don't disagree with one thing the mayor said. I actually find it very honorable that he's choosing to recuse himself if this comes up for a vote. He, I don't believe, in my opinion, that he's made his, his background and his kind of issue in this known, and I think that that was enough, but he's being so ethical and above approach, I really appreciate that he's done that. And I can tell that this is very personal to not only him, but probably a number of small-business owners and people like my dad. So, I echo what the mayor said, and I think it's, and I almost think it's almost a more moral approach. I think we can, and one other thing I have a question on, is you talked about collateral. I'm worried that no bank will lend with that lien attached to that loan. Yes, I understand your point that there may have to be a protection to the lender, but if you say, when you're trying to get your first small-business loan, which are virtually impossible to get, that you're going to attach a city lien off the bat for SDCs, that, that they don't have initially, maybe until it's been deferred, or the cash flow gets going, or they are lending on it, that that might be crippling to that small business also. So, I'm a little bit concerned by that provision, that would just in itself cripple the entire opportunity for people that we want to serve. I'm not so concerned, maybe, about the, the big guys. I don't know if it's fair, ethical, or legal to cut them out totally if this is a city policy. That might be a bigger discussion to have, but I think we should really look at this in a really, you know, and a little bit more, just a little bit more. I think we've, we've come a ways, but we need to look at it again.
What specifically is it that you're asking staff to look?
I'd like to see an option with actually, like, a workable deferral option. I like, I like the three-year option. I want to know about if we can limit it based on type and size of business, to attract more of a segment of the business population that we don't have enough of in our community. I think those are things I'd like to see us look at further.
And you're saying that the lien issue...
And I'm worried about that lien issue. What in the market lender is going to say, "Yeah, tack on this secondary lien"? Because a lot of times, if you have, a lot of lenders are going to require that that lien's paid in full to move forward with anything. They're not going to do anything with the secondary, or they won't let anybody take a secondary position behind them, or they won't take a secondary behind it.
Well, they definitely won't.
They won't. So, I think that there is some, and lenders may vary from lender to lender, but that really puts a wrinkle in it, just in the finding, and what lenders are willing to do.
So, how would the city get security?
You would basically have an unsecured loan now. And if there was bankruptcy, you would...
So...
If you're, you had a bankruptcy of a small-business person, odds are, there's no assets to, to pay it anyway.
So, I'm going to tell you, as a city manager, I'm not going to recommend you do that.
Right, right. And, and I would...
Okay, Councilor Stevens.
I would play, play the other side of this argument. I think it's interesting that staff reached out to other cities, and Tiger, Tuolatin, Lake, nobody else is doing...
No, I've looked all over the state, and nobody does this.
No one else does this. So, while I do like the idea of supporting small businesses, helping small businesses, I think there's a real risk of going too far out on this limb, and it's, cities not, if we're going to start a program to incentivize small businesses, then that's what this needs to be, not doing it through an SDC deferral or loan program to, to help small businesses. Then, we need, we're talking about a whole different sort of philosophy here, that we're growing small businesses here, and we're doing that. I don't think this is the place to be doing that. I do like the idea that we do help some small businesses, and I, and I agree with you that there's a criteria that needs to be met, because it puts the council in a position to be subjective. And we shouldn't, you know, you're going to get, some people are sympathetic, some people are not, some people who know those people, who say, "Yeah," you know? I mean, it's really hard, because there are our neighbors and our friends, too, you know? We know these people. Or we want to see that coffee shop, or that boutique rest, boutique restaurant. But it has to be more objective than that, than just, "Okay, this one goes, this one doesn't, and what are the merits?" And your council is going to change, so that, those personalities will change. So, I just, you know, I think, I think we're going too far to, what you did here, no other city's doing, we're reaching out to business, small businesses, or even big businesses, if they want to do this, up to $100,000, they can do that, and, and be very cut and dried about it, and not have this sort of nebulous program, you know? It's not even a program, it's just, these ideas, it has to be really spelled out. And then, and then we have to worry about the risk of, what happens if we don't have the funding to do the projects we need? It's very risky. What if a place goes bankrupt? Because small businesses fail all the time. We don't want to be holding the bag.
So, I would like to make a couple of comments. I'm not sure that I think the portrayal is completely accurate. I know for a fact, the city of Gresham decided to not just finance, but to waive all SDCs for a business under 5,000 square feet within their core business area. They just wrote it off. I mean, that's an incentive program. Assisting with small-business SDCs is not quite as radical as just forgiving everything, and yet, that has been done. I don't know about other cities, but I know that was done.
That would be a program under their economic development...
I was going to say, no, no city in their SDC code has an installment payment, no city that I, that I reviewed has an installment payment provision, or a deferral provision other than bankrupting, which is when we'd go out and give bonds.
So, forgiving all SDCs, whether that's under their economic development side, or some other side, is in fact a small-business incentivization program.
It is, but it's not tied to the ordinance that you're implementing your SDCs on.
It's a different program.
That's a, that's a program that they've chose, they've chosen to implement, because they want to see development in their historic downtown.
Small businesses.
And so, I'm not wanting to divert the discussion into whether we should reflect something similar, but, you know, we've got this proposal that staff has brought forward in the meantime. So, I'd like to hear from the other of your councilors. Councilor Akervall?
I, I wonder now, this, it, it might be helpful to kind of understand, in that larger context of a program versus SDCs, because maybe that's where our mind is, is trying to go, and we're trying to encompass, you know, being able to do some assistance or outreach, and we're trying to do that in here. But maybe if we had a little bit more information or context on what, as a city, we're doing in that broader, I guess, look, that would be helpful for, for this conversation. The point about having council vote, that was the one thing that I probably marked up and highlighted the most when reviewing the packet, because I had similar concerns about what, how would we evaluate the applications that come in front of us? And so, actually, that's just kind of a question. How would we evaluate the questions? Or what, what is the vision behind that? Why, why did we see that as being necessary? Or what kind of scenarios, I guess, would that be helpful in?
Well, the first reason is that we don't have signing authority of over $100,000, so we felt like, because that $100,000 is tied to council looking at, at contracts, that, first, it felt appropriate for that reason. The second reason is, the way it's structured right now, it's on one person, the city manager. And so, rather than having one person make the decision, we feel like if this is a policy that the council wants, that the policymakers should be making that decision. And I will add, when I first started after the March 18th, 19th meeting, the first thing I did was actually look at criteria, trying to find objective criteria to apply to a small business, and it was extremely difficult to do. And so, the decision was made that rather than trying to find this one niche of businesses that we want to access, if we limit the amount of SDCs that you're allowed to defer, that will necessarily, necessarily either a large business is only going to be, have that... be able to have that hundred thousand dollars or smaller businesses might not even, might not even get to a hundred thousand dollars. So more likely you're going to access that smaller business just by having that hundred thousand dollar cap. Um, so I'm answering your question and then adding something.
Because I think that was one of the questions that we had in our last discussion was like, okay, if we put forward, you know, some sort of provision or, or something here, how, how do we fund the people that we especially want to be, you know, being, that, that might be most in need, I guess, of this sort of assistance?
And that's where you get subjective. And now the latest trend also is, is large developers, for every development they do, form a separate LLC that's, you know, only funded with the, what they're putting into this development so that you can't get any, at any of their other assets. So large developers effectively become small developers when they do this whole project.
Yeah, mhm.
So I think, you know, that's why we came up with the amount rather than trying to classify the kind or type of business to keep it so it's completely objective criteria and you're not making a call between the restaurant, the Mexican restaurant and the.
Exactly.
And the Greek restaurant or whatever, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Councilor Leah?
I, I just, I just had a question about, uh, since, since we have brought up a couple of times about then what if there's a bankruptcy? Uh, what, what if there is a bankruptcy with SDCs? Then what's the procedure?
So you want me to take that one?
Sure.
So even if you have a lien, you're, it's going to be 99% of the time or more, it's going to be a secondary lien on a piece of property. So you're going to have effectively a second mortgage behind a, a traditional lender. And so if you go into bankruptcy, you're a secured creditor at that point. So you have some standing over completely unsecured creditors. If you don't take that secondary lien, then you're an unsecured creditor and you're in the lowest rung. So, um, you know, there, as the mayor said, many small businesses have very few assets. The only asset they may have is their real estate. So if there's enough asset, or if there's enough equity in the real estate to cover the primary lender, then that secondary lien will get you something. If you don't have the secondary lien, you're likely not going to collect the SDCs at all.
But, but my understanding was that the, that the SDC has to be paid regardless. I mean, that it runs with the property, it's.
No, it doesn't.
That it's a.
There's actually Oregon case law that says that it doesn't.
No.
So why would?
So if a subsequent user came into that same property after the bankrupt one and then they have all these impacts, they don't have to pay anything?
If they, they don't have to take on what the prior developer.
But they'll have to take on what they, their own impacts are.
Well, but if they're just buying the business as is, then there's no impact.
So unless.
Buying the bankrupt business.
But we had this conversation on the water SDCs, remember? And, and we were treating it like an, uh, like an asset. If they'd already paid the SDCs, then, and then, and then the builder of the house went out of business, that they've, it's been paid. So they, so the, the guy who buys that property has, um, doesn't have to pay the SDCs again because they've already paid the water SDC for that property, right?
Yeah.
Right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And if they, and if he goes out of business before he pays the SDC, then the guy who buys the property is going to have to pay the SDC, right?
I mean, we, I haven't researched this, so I'm speaking off the cuff, which is dangerous. But generally speaking in bankruptcy law, if there is a debt that exists, once you come out of bankruptcy, the debt is wiped clean. So someone could make an argument that essentially that debt does not exist. That debt that was incurred on the SDCs does not exist anymore. And if a developer comes along that has the same impact.
Well, well, uh, I'll just say this is different than the discussion we had a month or so ago.
Well, but I think what you're saying is if it's been paid, it's satisfied.
Yeah.
So there's nothing, there's no lien to go after.
And it, and it, but it, but remember we talked about it as an asset of that property? Just like he, if he had already built the foundation and, uh, and then goes out of business, now the person who buys the property is buying a piece of property with a foundation and paid SDCs and, and, and whatever has, whatever the status of building that property is. And that, and, and that's a factor what, for the buyer, that those have been covered, that those things have been paid for. So.
So I think the argument is the same. I mean, it's a little bit, so the SDC that you elected to defer and then the prop, and then the business went bankrupt. And when the business goes bankrupt, all of the business assets are, you know, that are, can be taken, are taken. And there's some things that are exempt in bankruptcy. But once the assets are all divided and distributed in accordance with the priorities in the bankruptcy court, then that debtor is considered free and clear. All of those debts are gone. So if the developer, if the debtor, um, had some interest left in the property and can get a loan and restart the business, the debt they had before is gone, even though they didn't pay it because they went through the bankruptcy proceeding. There are very few debts that stay in effect. One of them is taxes. Um, and then there are certain, I think, personal injury judgments.
So my perception of the question is, you know, how often does the bankrupt debtor start back up doing the same thing in the same location? My experience is very rarely. More commonly, it gets sold to someone else. So what are the SDC obligations of the next guy that comes in on a property?
Obligation?
No, it's, it's all settled by the court.
No, no.
Not, not that guy.
This is the bankruptcy, this is the next guy, the buyer.
Well, so what we do with number two now, so let's just take the example of the old Denny's restaurant. They paid SDCs and then they didn't go bankrupt, but they sold their business. You know, their SDCs were paid by cash. They could have been paid by discharge and bankruptcy too. When Black Bear came in, it was the same business, it wasn't expanded, same footprint. We don't get to charge SDCs again.
Yeah, so.
But they had already paid SDCs.
But you're talking about if, if it goes into bankruptcy and we have unsatisfied SDCs that haven't been paid.
Right, and then a new guy comes in and buys it.
New guy comes in, he, he gets a free ride on SDCs?
But are we speaking as an unsecured creditor or are we second?
I say it has nothing to do with, that's all discharged. It's a new discussion with the new.
But during the discharge process, if there's assets, then it would be applied to what whoever's owed money.
And I think.
The debt is discharged, so then it's as if it was paid.
For guy one, but guy number two comes in out of nowhere and says, oh, this is a nice property. I want to come develop in Wilsonville, goes in there and develops. Doesn't he still have to pay SDCs that were never paid?
I think it also depends on if development, so let's say they defer and they build a whole structure. We wouldn't be able to then say, you're using the exact same structure, structure, now pay us SDCs. I think that's what we're talking about.
But what's on the table is not deferment in that.
Capacity.
Capacity. Now you're proposing something entirely different. So, so all, we're 45 minutes into a 20-minute discussion here. Uh, so this, this is my contention that we don't have this all figured out yet. I just don't see the.
Okay, but can I just state, if somebody's entering into a deferral payment with the city, they're doing it at the time that they're picking up building permits, right?
Correct.
So construction is, in this scenario, construction is assumed. This is not like a blank piece of property where you're going to have a deferral payment and nobody's going to come in and pick up SDCs. That's a different story because then if that property goes into bankruptcy, it's just sold. And then somebody else has to come back and submit a building permit, correct?
Isn't all the leverage with the city because they hold, they hold a final occupancy certificate, like, authority? Like, and we're talking about deferral that's like three months at the most, like six months before a small business gets going. We're not talking about like, oh, I've been in business for five years, I'm not making it now, I have to file bankruptcy. That, that's at least my perception of what we're talking about and the capacity of it. And then the cities, all the leverage is with the city because they don't have to give final occupancy. They can just be like, you didn't meet the requirement, no.
It's easier said than done.
Thank, yeah. That, we had a similar issue with Subaru in that they wanted to open for Black Friday and we had this issue of they hadn't paid yet.
But we had deferred multiple times and we're not proposing that that be a option that's preserved under this wording.
I'm, what do you, what do you mean by that?
We're not talking about deferring for several years. We're talking about either deferring till you get certificate of occupancy or doing an installment plan where you're contractually obligated.
Can I make a suggestion here? Because we're way over time. So we'll do a memo to you.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
We'll do a memo on what happens if we do a deferral agreement or we do installment payments and they go bankrupt. And then what happens?
And we'll look at the, the larger economic programs.
And then in the meantime, I think the, the question becomes is the more SDCs you defer or you put onto installments, the less SDCs you have in your bank account. And so that's the balancing act that you have to look at. And how many projects do you want to do? Do you want to have to go out and borrow money because you haven't collected? Because you're trying to help, um, any business, because we can't say small business. It's just, we can only limit by, limit it by dollars. So we'll do a memo. Hopefully that will answer all your questions. If you have any other questions that we haven't talked about tonight, please bring them up ahead of time. Then we can address it then because we've literally been doing this since March and, and we need to get the code going. I don't want it to be wrong, I want it to be right. And I want all your questions to be answered and you feel, you have to feel satisfied and be able to vote. But we can't keep thinking about more what ifs every time.
Can I say also if the home builder's letter is not substantially different than the letter they submitted three months ago or two months ago?
I'd like to read it.
I, I'm, I'm just telling you that there's not, there's not a lot of new information.
All right.
And this has nothing to do with their rates they're going to be paying.
Okay, so it's on the agenda for tonight.
So you can pull it?
So when we do the agenda approval or when we get to that item, we'll continue it or what?
I think when you get downstairs, you will just do an amended agenda and you will announce that you won't be hearing that matter. So anybody that's there will know that you're going to continue it to a date certain. So you would have to pick a date certain.
Preferably not the next meeting.
You're not going to be here?
No, it's just not enough time.
Okay.
So two meetings?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And so does anybody have a date?
I'll give it to you here in a second. 17th of June.
Mayor? 617?
Yes.
Okay, so when we do a motion, well, I just, if, when you do the motion on agenda, just, uh, the motion should note that, uh, per discussion in work session, that we will be moving to continue ordinance number 816, uh, until June 17th. Okay. Thank you, one and all, complex subject, still looking to figure out some of it. Uh, Belnet Court and Maury Court Outfall Restoration Project. Hi, hopefully not as complicated.
I hope not. All right, I'll try to make this quick. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Carrie Raffel, Natural Resources Manager. And if I can find my presentation up at the top, there we go. So I'm going to try to go through this very quickly. Like I said, I know you need to catch up here. So yes, before you tonight on the consent agenda is the construction contract award for the Willamette River Stormwater Outfalls.
This is under Resolution 2744 on your outline.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just so you know what we're talking about in terms of the location, these are two outfalls that are located along the Willamette River. And they actually sit between, um, River Green, they're, one of the outfalls is, is a part of the River Green subdivision. It's the one on the left side. Um, we should see this pathway coming down to the river. Um, and that's where they get their access to their boat dock. And then just to the east of it is what we're referring to as the Maury Court location. So that comes off the end of Maury Court. And then there's a private drive that goes to two property owners or two properties and these property owners that we'll be working with. And so, um, it involves a lot of the same issues that we've seen with other outfalls where we've had, you know, significant amounts of stormwater that isn't managed in any way. And, uh, goes back to, you know, a very old time, older time in terms of, um, you know, we didn't really have the same standards that we have today. So these are undetained flows and they've caused considerable erosion, um, along the channel and where the, uh, the outfall is actually daylight right now, so. But in terms of the contract award, uh, we had a bid opening on April 25th. We received three bids and the lowest bid was actually, um, just as you can see, a little bit over $1 million. There was only about a $90,000 difference between the low bid and the high bid. And once again, we got three bids. And so we're looking to start the construction in June. Um, we're limited by what's called an in-water work period. So both of these sites involve water or work that we'll be doing actually below the ordinary high water and some of it actually below the, the water elevation that we have right now. And, uh, we're looking to complete the project. Um, substantial completion is the end of November. And then we'll be wrapping up all the other details of the project by the end of the year. So that's the proposal at this point. I'm certainly here to take any questions.
Council, questions? Councilor West?
Big, small, all bids. It's not always about price. It sounds like the prices are close. There's those intangibles that you get when you work with a contractor. Um, and when you meet with them and maybe it's professionals and maybe it's their experience, all these different things. Um, out of those bids, do you guys have like a preference of those intangibles that kind of set them apart since they're so close?
Yeah, can't really, yeah, yeah.
You can't say that?
Well, the gallows.
The city attorney, the city manager.
You can ask if they're on the state's bar list.
I'm just going to. It's public contracting law. When you've got construction contracts with public funds, you have to take the low bid unless they're on bar contract or something.
Well, then I retract that whole entire statement because I had no idea.
Now with professional services contract, you, you've got more latitude, but not on a construction contract.
Okay. Councilor Akrova?
I have a small point. I just noticed on the contract, let's see, it's page 104 of our packet, page 20, I think of that section. If you have like, I don't know which version you have.
I just printed out parts of it. Yeah, that means you can direct me to.
Yeah, it's right, it's in the notices, section 28, the notices. I noticed that Steve Adams is listed.
Yes.
Right?
So Steve, I don't know if you've heard, Steve left the city.
Right.
And so.
And that's why I was questioning.
So we tried to catch those, Steve prepared the report and.
Yes, I'm, as I figured, probably involved in this project, but just wondered if we needed to.
That's a good point.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Councilor.
That was it.
Others? Okay, I'm still hoping we're at the end of our outfall problems because we talked about how long, how long ago this was done. I remember when we agreed to build Maury's Landing and when we agreed to build River Green and we were assured this was all taken care of.
We don't make those assurances anymore.
Yeah.
All right.
It's a dynamic river.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Yep. Uh, Metro mandatory commercial food scrap program. We may have to streamline this also.
I forgot my glasses, so I apologize for squinting while I find where I'm supposed to be. All right. Again, Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney. I also have with me Mark Ottnad, our Public Affairs Director. And then I also have Pam Peck with, um, Metro here and then Evan Polk, who's with Clackamas County. They both work on the, um, commercial, have worked on the commercial food scrap program. And so I'm going to let Pam start with a little bit of background about how we got here.
Great, thank you, Amanda. Good evening, Mayor Knapp and members of the council. My name is Pam Peck and I'm the Resource Conservation and Recycling Manager at Metro. Um, thank you for the opportunity to come to your meeting tonight and talk about this. And also thank you for the leadership that you've provided on this issue. I know you took actions in both 2017 and 2018 to establish a voluntary food scraps, uh, program for businesses here in Wilsonville, and that's really fantastic. So I'm just going to try to really briefly cover a little bit of background on the policy, um, why food scraps are a priority, and then just a little bit of background on the specifics of the policy. Um, so, um, this requirement is directed at businesses in the region because 55% of the food waste in the region comes from businesses. And, uh, so that's the focus of this, not residential food scraps. Um, the overall greenhouse, uh, gas benefits of doing this would be the equivalent of taking about 3,000 cars off the road or saving 1.6 million gallons of gas if we recover just half of this food that's currently put in landfills. Um, food scraps from businesses tend to be cleaner and more concentrated. So we know that there are 2,700 businesses in the region that are generating, um, 55, you know, huge amount of these food scraps as compared to the hundreds of thousands of households that have small amounts. So that's why the focus is on commercial, larger businesses and the requirement impacts businesses that generate the most food waste, not small. So think about grocery stores and restaurants, um, as the ones who are covered by this. So, um, food is the largest component of what the region throws away and as garbage. So 18% of what we send to landfill is currently food. Um, that's a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. And you don't want that food rotting in landfills. Um, once it's inside a landfill, it creates methane, which is 24 times more potent than CO2. So our goal is really to capture the environmental benefits and economic benefits of not putting this food in the landfill and instead turning it to a higher and better use by making it to compost and energy and things like that. So we've had 15 years of voluntary. So we've had 15 years of voluntary programs across the region. And a tremendous amount of food is still going in the garbage. We have about 5,000 semi trucks full of food that are still going out to the landfill. So there's a lot of food still in the trash. So we do have about 1,200 businesses that participate now across the region, but the ability to separate your food scraps and have that picked up isn't available to businesses across the region. So there's a couple of things that a mandatory program does. It creates efficiency for setting up collection routes. So rather than having one or two businesses scattered across a large geographic area, you can then more efficiently serve a business district where you have food generating businesses. The other thing it does is we have a lot of businesses in our region, local, regional, national scale, that have outlets in more than one city. So it creates consistency for them in terms of staff training. It allows those businesses to meet their sustainability goals. And I'll talk in a minute about that was very important to businesses that we talked to through our engagement work. This isn't a local, so this covers some of the things I already talked about. It's, we're recovering a valuable material for energy and the nutrients to put them back into agriculture. It's an opportunity to really do something more with the food. It will clean up our garbage. So in theory, over time, as our garbage is drier, we can look at other types of things to do with recovery from our garbage. The state thinks this is very important. The state has told us we have a goal to recover 25% of wasted food, and also the update of the state's recycling laws prioritized food waste recovery as well. As I mentioned before, our voluntary programs really haven't seen growth. I've got another chart, which kind of just shows how they plateaued. And so the other thing that the mandate does is in addition to reducing the negatives of putting that food in the landfill, you get the positives of actually addressing food loss or food waste that starts at the beginning of the process. So a tremendous amount of the environmental impacts of our food are actually in its production. And through this effort, we'll be working with businesses to look at how we can help them reduce that food loss and prevent food waste in the beginning. And we'll also be, where appropriate, connecting businesses with donation opportunities. In the six states and 13 municipalities that have adopted mandatory programs or landfill bans, they've seen an increase in food going to food rescue agencies. We have partnered with the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. Clackamas County is part of that partnership, so it's a partnership between the industry and local governments here in our area to address food loss prevention, food donation, and setting up compost programs. That program is called Food Waste Stops With Me. We've got it started a couple of years ago, so we can really be ready when this requirement comes into place. It includes a lot of resources for businesses where they can learn more about these techniques, share their successes with each other, and will also include in-person technical assistance that Clackamas County will deliver to the businesses in your area. So just want to briefly talk about the outreach that we did. There were about two years of outreach involved in developing this policy. And many of your, I recognize many of your elected officials and staff who have participated in that process. Our local government engagement included a number of discussions with SWAC, where Mark was there, asking great questions. We were at MPAC, the Regional City Managers Group. We've met with the Regional Mayors and Chairs Group, so really tried to understand local government concerns, but also business concerns. And the survey that you see referenced here, the business survey was actually a survey of businesses outside of the city of Portland. The city of Portland has had a mandatory requirement sitting on their books for quite a while, and they have the most mature kind of programs in the region. So we really wanted to find out what businesses outside of the city thought. So the survey was of businesses that currently are separating food for compost, as well as businesses that had never done that before. And just at a high level, what we found is that about, there were 10% opposed to the mandate, but we had 45% that were in favor, 15% that said they had no strong concerns and would comply, and 30% that had some concerns. And I just want to talk briefly, and we've really worked to address those concerns. They said they wanted to have onsite technical assistance, they wanted to have good support from their haulers, and they wanted to have training materials for their staff. Businesses who hadn't participated in the past were concerned about costs, space constraints, and just sort of cleanliness. And businesses who have participated saw an opportunity to save money, but they indicated cost neutrality was more important to them, or that's the most important thing to them, cost neutrality, and businesses really wanted to do something positive for the environment. So just a few things to address those concerns. The technical assistance program that I already talked about. Metro is supporting the staff time, we're supporting containers for businesses, technical assistance tools. The Metro Council is subsidizing the rate, tip fee rate for food scraps. We've also created an access to services program for haulers who will have to travel a longer distance than they would have anyway, to compensate them for the hauling distance. And our Innovation and Investment Grant Program has grants for both businesses and nonprofits. We gave a few out, I won't mention them, but those would be available to businesses and nonprofits in your community, as well around food waste reduction and recovery. And there's a new cycle that kicks off June 1st. Another piece we did is this is phased in over time, and it starts with the largest businesses over a five-year period.
So for the city of Wilsonville, we have a requirement by July 31, 2019 to adopt implementing ordinances. Thankfully, since we just went through our franchise agreement, we anticipated that this program was coming, so it's already addressed in our ordinance. So really, what's left for the city of Wilsonville is to update its administrative rules. There's one minor change we're going to have to make to one of our code provisions regarding enclosures. But generally speaking, we can cover all of the new requirements through our administrative rules. So we have the deadline of July 31, and then we will be working with Clackamas County on our implementation plan. Then is when the rollout starts for the different groups. So for group one, though, like Pam said, those are the big, you know, grocery stores, restaurants. They have between March 31, 2020 and March 31, 2021 to get set up. So by March 31, 2021, they need to be in compliance. The next group has until September 30, 2022 to be in compliance. And then the group three has until September 30, 2023 to be in compliance. So I'm going to kind of skip over this, because I, I know we're short on time, but there's a Metro ordinance and Metro administrative rules that have guided where we are, where we have gone with our administrative rules. These are also in your staff report. These are the different business groups that are breaking down. It's based by, based on how much food waste they're generating. And so obviously, the largest ones are first, and then as you go down in the amount of pounds of food waste, you will wrap in more business groups. Wilsonville is looking at about 15 to 20 businesses in the first rollout, 20 to 25 businesses in the second, and then 20 to 25 in the third. We also have about, I think, 10 current voluntary, yeah, businesses. So we are going to be updating our Wilsonville administrative rules and code. Right now, we do have the voluntary program in our administrative rules, so we will be switching that to mandatory, following the same groups that Metro has outlined. And finally, I'm going to have Evan just chime in really quickly about how Clackamas County is helping us in, particularly with the technical assistance with the businesses and the outreach.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Clackamas County provides technical assistance to businesses throughout the county and its cities. We have for many years focused on waste reduction and recycling, and we also help many businesses set up food scraps collection through the voluntary programs. We have experience doing this. And it'll be our goal to offer a business whatever training, containers, signage, were mentioned, that they need in order to make it as painless and easy as possible to get started. We'll also use that process to help them identify opportunities to reduce their costs. They might identify some, you know, some opportunities to reduce food waste, for example, or there may be an opportunity to donate high-quality edible food that we can help them pursue. So that'll be kind of our role as this rolls out.
And I failed to mention that we do have members of Republic Services in the audience today. I not, I don't think they're planning on providing any comment at the meeting, but they may. And I also wanted to say that our bulky waste day that we just had, which council had asked for two bulky waste days instead of one, was an absolute success. We had, we had 430 vehicles come in, which was more than double the last one. So it was amazing. Yeah, yeah, so.
It was lined up on the road.
Yeah. So, so it's, it was really, really successful. So with that, just to summarize, there isn't necessarily any action the council has to take on the administrative rules. If there's something that councilors see that they'd like changed from the red line that I provided, feel free to provide me comments. We'll have those go in effect on July 31. And then in July, we will be coming back with the minor amendment to the code that needs to be done to address the enclosures. But other than that, that's the only action that council will officially see on this.
Who's doing direct outreach to the businesses?
We'll be doing, well, we'll work together with you on the notification process, and then we'll be doing in-person outreach.
And, and Republic Services actually has already provided me with some examples of flyers that they, in conjunction with other local governments, have provided for education on these types of programs. So that's something that we will also definitely look at. We will be doing, the city will be undertaking some outreach, and we'll be working with Jordan to, Jordan Vance, to do some outreach as well.
Counsel, questions? Counselor Stevens?
Just one request. So we have 10 volunteer businesses who've been doing this for a while. I'd love to get some feedback, not from all of them, but from a handful, a few of those, just to get their experience and what they're, how it's been going. So we can, we can understand it a little better from the user side.
And we can work together on that.
Okay, okay. Just at the next opportunity.
Counselor Akval?
I'd be curious, with that feedback, to find out which group, you know, who, yeah, which group they are. Are they the large or the small, or, you know, is there any difference in scale, I guess, of how this?
Counselor Leah?
Where is Cisco on this? Are they bigger than a grocery store, more than a restaurant? What's their, or are they one of the 10?
Yeah. It will depend on their, well, I know we've done a lot of, we've actually have done outreach to them, but I'm not sure at that facility.
Are you referring to a, like a processing and distribution operation here, or work they do on behalf of businesses in the city?
No, just wholesale distribution.
I mean, they manage, a lot of food goes in and out.
Then they would potentially be subject to this.
Or food processing, specific foods.
I'm not sure what their arrangements are now, but we did meet with the food processors a number of times. But some food processors use, have arrangements with farms, so under the policy, those are arrangements that can be documented and continued. So it could be that they have some kind of thing they're doing on their own if they're not using Republic.
Their food goes back to the farm?
It could be, I don't know. Evan can kind of find that out. But some, but some large folks who have large amounts have relationships like that, like I know Resers and Beaverton and others have relationships like that, so they direct all to, to a farm or to some kind of an ag use out.
They send out 30 to 40 semis a day to restaurants across the Northwest. It's big.
Yeah, and actually, you know, they're part of helping food be managed efficiently in a kitchen, because when the food comes all prepped like that, it tends to be more, less lost at the kitchens that are using that.
Would, would you like me to just list off or mention the businesses that are doing this now?
Yeah, yeah.
Voluntarily?
Yeah. It's a pretty short list. Mentor Graphics, Cafe Yum, Fred Meyer, Costco, Coffee Creek Correctional, Albertson's, McMenamin's, Collins Aerospace, and Coca-Cola.
That's wild.
Counselor West?
Couple of questions. Is schools, cafeterias, and public entities, are they also subject to nonprofits? Are they subject to the food waste program?
Yeah, so schools are all in the third phase, so your public schools, your secondary and elementary schools, and that would, the requirement, I didn't talk about this, it only covers back of the house waste. And what we mean by that is the food scraps or waste that are directly under the control of a business. So the container that's maybe out in the cafeteria, right, they would not be required, but everything in the back of the kitchen, if they're prepping food. So yes, assisted living, retirement homes, there's a number of groups like that that are all covered by this, because they basically have large onsite food.
What about our senior center?
It would depend on their, what kind of food preparation is going, going on in there. They may or may not fall into that. So they probably fall into maybe one of those.
Has a, has a test pilot been considered? Because you put a new mandate on business, and this is logistically a large lift, as exciting as it is, and the ability, I'm guessing the goal of this also is to maybe produce energy out of methane, and that would a great opportunity. Is there a pilot program being considered to kind of learn the logistic difficulties that may arrive as we put a mandate on business?
Well, we feel like we do have a good track record of experience with 15 years of helping businesses with this type of work. I don't know, how many years in Clackamas County have you been helping them with?
That, that 15-year number goes for the city of Portland, right?
That includes the city of Portland, so I wanted to give you an accurate number for.
We have some cities that have offered it voluntarily for at least eight years. And in unincorporated Clackamas County, it's been available for a few years.
And we do have experience, really, in almost every type and size of business you can imagine implementing programs. And through the Food Waste Stops With Me, we're really working to share, have, you know, share those great stories and showcase the businesses, so businesses can learn from each other.
So Oregon Restaurant Association has offices here in Wilsonville. Their position paper on this dated the 15th of May says they favor a different implementation process. Has Metro been in dialogue with the Restaurant Association?
We've, we've been in dialogue with them probably since 2015. They were really clear that they opposed a mandatory requirement. They oppose that type of regulation. They've been very clear about that all along. We, the Metro Council really looked at the experience with the voluntary program and felt it was time to move to a mandatory program. The Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association has been an amazing partner. They partnered with us through all of our business outreach. They provided us lists of businesses for our survey, for our interviews, for our one-on-one meetings, and they partnered with us on the development of Food Waste Stops With Me. They just deepened that commitment by forming a food loss committee within their organization that will be working to give us additional feedback and work with us more on the technical assistance resources. So they've been a tremendous partner, but they do, they don't agree with our, our approach. They would like to see a voluntary program.
That's not what their paper says. It says they'd like to see a different implementation process. It does not argue against having it at this point in time.
Well, and I was going to say, that, that letter's actually dated May 15, 2018, so.
You're right. It's a year old.
That's, I think it's the letter they submitted, and also they testified. So I, I think it represents, they wanted to see a voluntary program and thought that we should set a voluntary goal with them. So I believe that's what that letter talks about.
So our ability to impact anything that they're requesting here is done, is what I would say.
Well.
Metro has already adopted. Metro has already adopted the policy, yes.
Okay, I would like to make one point. Would you go back several slides, please? There.
Before they adopted it, when they got it adopted.
No. Next one?
This one?
Yes. Last bullet. Property owner must provide space to commercial tenant. I read to you 5.10.430, business food waste requirement in the Metro requirements. One, local governments must require, one, covered businesses, which are the generating, in their jurisdiction, to source separate and recover business food waste. To source separate and cover business, that's requirement number one. Number two, delivery of collected business food waste to a facility authorized by Metro. Three, and I'll read the preface, local governments must require, three, persons must require persons, as defined by Metro Code 1.1040H, who provide space to a covered business to allow source separation and collection of food waste. That does not say they must provide space to the commercial tenant. You have got commercial leases in a multi-user property wherein certain square footage is leased to the tenant. You cannot come in with an outside requirement and say you must modify your contract to give this tenant more space, which is what that implies, and does not reflect the wording in Metro's ordinance that is in our packet.
I apologize if I simplified that too much, but your point is, we'll take it.
All right, I just don't want confusion about what the requirement is.
So when we do the enclosure amendment for the code, we will be using Metro's language. Because that's what we have to do for the code, is we have to address that issue.
Can I, if I might mention, part of the underlying intent with that language is simply that we have a number of businesses that have, you know, asked us for the service over the years, and their property manager has been unwilling to facilitate it. And so that's part of what Metro's getting at.
So you've got a contractual issue. I mean, you cannot require the property owner to donate more square footage that no one's paying for in order to facilitate this program. The, the property owner has contracts with each tenant for certain space, certain square footage, and allowing the tenant to function with the program within the space that they have already leased is one thing, but you, you go way over into another area if you're saying, "Well, they gotta come up with some more space so they can do this," is an entirely, I mean, that, that's getting right in the middle of those contracts.
It's true that this, it's true that this issue of enclosures is one that I've been bringing up at SWAC, the Salt Waste Advisory Committee at Metro, and it's one that we see on a practical implementation. We can, through code, require new development to comply.
Right.
But it will only be when there's major remodels or renovation of existing commercial space that the city would have the opportunity to change. So the enclosure issue is gonna be a very tricky one. I agree.
And, and we've already had a commitment, thankfully, what's really been nice about this is that the jurisdictions have all been working together, particularly with the help of Clackamas County's facilitation. And so the enclosure issue is something we've all identified as something we'd like to discuss more broadly and continue to meet on. So I think we anticipate that that'll be a discussion point, even beyond the food scrap program.
All right, that sounds good. And then I just want to remind people that we actually, in Wilsonville, not only supported this program, we had a private hauler that was proposing to build an anaerobic digester here in Wilsonville and utilize the methane gas to power garbage trucks and whatnot. But Metro chose not to go down that road, and as I understand it, has not really implemented alternative programs so far.
We are, I expect you'll see some new procurements coming out, and we're working to get a, a good deal for everyone, and that process didn't relate to a deal that we thought the public would want to pay for over time. So look for some new requests for bids coming out on that.
We would like to reissue our deal.
Okay.
I tried, very much summarized along the procurement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to a few minutes. Do we want to do, I don't know how we're gonna do goals. Do we want to do that at the end of the meeting under city manager?
We can do it under mayor's business, it's on there for, actually, it was really just on there for you to discuss.
Yeah, we may have to discuss downstairs.
That's fine.
Okay, so let's do vertical housing zone things. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor Napps, City Councilors. Chris Namsoo, Community Development Director. With me tonight is Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager, and we are here tonight to continue the conversation that we started a few months ago on the vertical housing development zone on three specific parcels in the Vilbois Village Center. Since our last meeting, staff has continued to try to become the in-house experts on this particular tax abatement program. Jordan has been attending a variety of practitioner group meetings around the region. It's a fairly common tool in our region, and there's a number of economic development professionals that meet on this subject regularly. If you recall, the ownership group, RCS, and Rudy Cadleb is here this evening, master planner of the Vilbois community, representing the ownership group in the Village Center, RCS, they wrote a letter to me late last year describing the difficulties they've had with finding a developer to finish the final pieces in the Vilbois Village Center, which is literally the heart of the community. It's envisioned as a lively mixed-use center with shops and restaurants surrounding a pot, surrounding the piazza. This vision obviously has been clearly articulated for well over a decade since the inception of the Vilbois Master Plan back in 2003, and many community residents have completely bought into this vision, and we're trying to complete this important part of the Vilbois project. The ownership group has been through quite a bit over, over the many years that they've had ownership of this area. They have had literally contracts with five different developers, letters of intent, letters of interest to various levels of, of interest, and none have been able to make the project actually pencil out financially. Now, our most recent developer, Capstone Partners, has also find them, found that their pro forma is underperforming, and the project that they designed, very nice, attractive project, is actually not financially feasible. So they will not be pursuing a land use application with the city of Wilsonville at this time. That project is officially on hold. City staff are here tonight to see if the council is interested in having staff continue to pursue the, setting up the tax abatement absent an actual developer and an actual project. City staff recommends that the city should use whatever tools it can, whatever tools are at its disposal, to incentivize completion of the heart of the Vilbois community, including establishment of the vertical housing development zone. So Jordan's gonna run through a handful of slides. They are fairly high level, and do you know which one you got?
I don't see our presentation up here.
You have to put it in that one, Kim?
So I guess, maybe while they're doing that, Mr. Namsoo, can you give us any thought about the, the pragmatic timing of this discussion relative to the Vilbois fire that happened so recently?
So the, the fire caused many complexities, obviously. There's, the, the fire event happened right following an open house, a community open house. The fire happened before, excuse me, the community open, open house. Actually, I'm getting these things mixed up in my head. Let me get these, these straight.
Rudy shaking his head.
Rudy shaking his head. Rudy was at the meeting, so he can tell us about that.
The open house was on Monday preceding the fire.
Preceding it. So there were a lot of, a lot of emotions at the open house. It was, in fact, the development group was actually unable to make the presentation at the meeting. It was a very emotional meeting, lots of folks had many different perspectives, things that this council has heard before about the marketing of certain homes in the Village Center, real estate agents not being forthcoming with factual information about the build-out of the Village Center, being told a variety of different things, everything from it's going to be open space to it'll just be more single-family homes or actual developed parks. So there was a lot of, I think, misinformation, which is incredibly unfortunate. The, the fire event obviously exacerbated those concerns, I think, has put a little bit of a, a focus on taller buildings. There's been some focus on that. Density has taken a beating through this process. So a wide variety of things have come out following the fire that have made, that made the Capstone Partners group decide that this was really, in addition to the financial infeasibility of their pro forma, it was an uphill battle that they really weren't willing to take on at this time. And we have the presentation. Thank you, Kim. Jordan, take it away.
All right, thank you, thank you, Kim, thank you, Chris. Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager. I'll give you a quick background on vertical housing development zone, or VHDZ. So the program, it's a property tax abatement incentive. It allows a developer to construct a mixed-use development when it might not otherwise be financially feasible, and particularly in a suburban environment. We've heard from developers, there's challenges in making suburban mixed-use development pencil due to various reasons, lack of demand for retail, low, low retail rents, high cost of mixed-use construction, small lot size, parking restrictions, and softening suburban residential rents that haven't kept up with rising construction costs. So VHDZ can create an incentive for a project when it might not otherwise be financially feasible, and it can benefit the community in numerous ways by stimulating growth, increasing value of surrounding properties, and creating vibrant neighborhoods, and in this case, walkable amenities to the Vilbois Community Center, which can reduce trips and vehicle miles traveled. Wilsonville currently does not have a VHDZ in our, in our city, but it's a common tool in Oregon used in over twenty-five communities. And through House Bill 310 in 2017, the state of Oregon moved the administration of the program from the state to the local level. So the local jurisdiction is now responsible for all components of the program. So here's a quick overview of how the program works. Once a VHDZ is created, so you define the boundary, in this case, would be the three parcels adjacent to the Vilbois Village Center. Projects that meet criteria can apply for a ten-year partial property tax abatement, and the tax exemption applies to the building only, not the land, and is typically twenty percent per floor of residential use, up to eighty percent total above a ground floor, which is typically fifty percent commercial use. So in this example, there's three floors of residential above a ground floor that's fifty percent commercial, so this would be eligible for a sixty percent property tax abatement on the building structure over a ten-year period. After ten years, the full value of the project is placed back on the tax rolls, and if there's affordable housing included, the project is eligible for abatement on the value of the land as well to the same proportion. And while affordable housing is an optional component of the incentive program, it has been reported by many of the cities in the Portland region that it's not always financially feasible to incorporate, as the amount of revenue foregone is not offset by the VHDZ land abatement. So this is not a surprising insight, given the financial challenges of even achieving market-rate mixed-use development. Here's a quick illustration. It was built off the Capstone exercise, but it just visually shows how the abatement would work over a ten-year period. So if you see the two numbers circled, the two-point-six million is, or the two-point-five, excuse me, is the revenue foregone from the abatement, and the two-point-one million is the net new city revenue from the development. And then after, similar to urban rural districts, after the tenth year, the exemption to the project expires, and taxing districts receive taxes on the full value of the property. So in conclusion, if council gives us direction today to pursue this program, here are the implementation steps that we would take. So first, we're required to notify all taxing districts, overlapping taxing districts of these properties, and they are given an overview of the project and what we're trying to achieve with this incentive, and they're given forty-five days to opt out of the, the program. And so to give you some more context on this, in the twenty-five other cities that have established VHDZs, only six of them had one or more district opt out, so it's not very common. Typically, the amount of revenue foregone is a very small, represents a very small percentage of their annual budget. The next step is we determine a plan on how to administer the program, so determine application and staff time, program costs, and then we come back to council with a resolution to adopt a vertical housing development zone. So this concludes the presentation, and we'll now open it up for questions.
Counsel, what do you think? Counselor Stevens?
So, if I recall, I think the Capstone project had part of their commercial area, it was their mailroom, and so I think if we're gonna invigorate that center, the town center, the piazza area, it's really important that that all stays, that we have as commercial areas there, that some other use, that's specific, like mailroom or whatever, an exclusive use room for that, just a few tenants is not, is not done. It's just one thought, if we move forward with this. And then the other is, I really would like to see, even if it's a small percentage, eight, ten percent or so, to see if we can incorporate affordable housing into this program. Counselor Akval and I attended, 'cause Clackamas Cities Dinner, and Northwest Housing Alternatives representatives were there, and they're really eager to reach out and work with cities in Clackamas County, all over the region, actually, in making affordable housing successful for everybody, win-win-win all the way around. And so, you know, I, I know you can't do the whole, the whole, any whole development like that, we're not just in that position. And I know we're exploring that idea in the next few months, it's a council goal, but maybe if we can incorporate that, at least start that conversation to looking at a few of these units that are eventually gonna be developed. It's just, there's such a housing need here, you know, in Wilsonville and region-wide for families to be able to live in those, in this area that are struggling. Thanks.
Counselor Akval?
I was curious, in the packet, in, you know, in your presentation as well, you listed out the different communities that have used this, and I was curious for those other communities that have, I'm assuming, found success with this, but I'd like to hear kind of some, from their experiences as well. Did they have a project that was, like, close to application or in application? When, how did the timing work? When they, you know, when they went with the vertical housing zone and timing of application and having a project? Because, you know, before we had a project, there were some people, you know, that had concerns about the project, some people are seeing value about the project, and then we're looking at the vertical housing thing. I would, I guess, I would say from my personal view, like, we want a project that's gonna knock it out of the park, you know? And, and if this is a tool that would help a project knock it out of the park, meet those parking restrictions, and have a commercial area that's vibrant and exciting, you know, then, then that's one thing. Saying, "Yeah, we're all for this," and not knowing what would be the fruit of the program, I guess, is, I'm just not sure how that would work. So I'm curious how it's all ruled out in other communities.
So to answer that, and also touching on one of the first questions on how do we achieve this vision of having a vibrant community square, the state has very broad criteria for the program, so they specify that the ground floor needs to be fifty percent non-residential. So that gives room for the local jurisdiction to include additional criteria if we want to see certain uses or not see certain uses. For example, if we wanted to say, specify what active use means or what commercial means. So we could include that in the program to make sure that we do achieve this vibrant square that we're, we're hoping to. In terms of other jurisdictions, they're, it's all very different. Some cities have reported having a project in place, and this helped to catalyze it and make the project.
Chip it over or something, okay.
Yeah. We, we met with Beaverton, and they applied VHDZ to a very large swath of land in their city center, and reported that it had been successful for them. But it was a large, it wasn't a vacant piece of land, it was a large area that included commercial, residential, single-family neighborhoods.
I think if you're gonna give incentives, and you have the ability to ask for things in exchange for those incentives, that's what you would direct your staff to say. We want it to be viable, commercial, not mailboxes. We would like you to, you know, at least consider having some affordable housing, and whatever other reasonable criteria that we could come up with. I mean, it's an incentive, so you should get something in exchange.
Yeah.
Counselor West?
This is an interesting topic. In the master plan, it's been a long time, and we're now coming towards the end of Vilbois, and two of your council members live there, and our hearts are pretty tied there, and I think the rest of the council in the city is too. But I, I feel like over time, some things have definitely changed, and things change. And the utopia promised in that circle, in that center, has been a challenge since its promised beginnings and infancies and, and ideas, it's been a challenge. It was somewhat promised, and then the market said, "No," and then a number of other things happened, and then, of course, the fire complicates that.
I think that if, if people want a mixed-use vertical housing, and that's what they want, that's, that's awesome. But there are some trade-offs when you decide to do that. There are things that happen that are just part of when you choose that option. And some of the things that I'm hearing from my neighbors is, you know, there's a parking concern, that's not new and it's legitimate, and there has been an increase of crime in Vilbois recently, and some of the neighbors are concerned that's, how dense it's become, and some of the things that have been promised have produced a different outcome. We just had graffiti on a building, people are having cars broken into, we're not sure if the fire or not, with the intent of that was, that was man-made and caused. And so there's a lot of real concern about the safety of the community, and tied with parking, and tied, and not wanting to be tone-deaf to the people that now live there. So they moved into there, they had this expectation we talked about, the expectation flat out has not been met, and now we're coming up with possibly what they would consider a fun gimmick that is going to exacerbate the problems that they're living with. And I don't want to be tone-deaf to that. And we don't have a builder now because the market once again said, "Even with your incentive, this idea just is a little bit far-fetched for us right now." We're not a rentco station there, we're three vacant lots. And I'm really concerned that, right now, and the way this is being done, is totally tone-deaf to the people that just had their neighborhood burnt down, having cars broken into, having increased the crime, packages stolen off their doorsteps, and things that they have never had to see in Vilbois before and are not customary necessary to Wilsonville. It gives me great pause. We have a lot of things that we do that also potentially ask other taxing districts to give up something. I just don't know if we're here with that yet, is my concern. I'm not saying no, if people that, in the neighborhood say, "Yes, I want this multi-unit housing, this is what I want my community to look like," then it's their community. I don't know, and some of them are saying that, but they also want parking, they want cement concessions. I just want to make sure we're not being tone-deaf, and that we realize the trade-offs we're asking for when we do something like this.
the trade-offs we're asking for when we do something like this.
So what timeframe is the staff thinking about?
We would need to send out letters to the taxing districts and give them 45 days to opt out. After that period, we would be in a position to report back to the council and come with a resolution adopting a vertical housing zone.
So council doesn't have to say yes or no, or finalize the conditions that would apply until that later date?
The conditions would be specific to a project, right? The VHDZ is a standalone.
But we'd have to set a policy about what we were gonna...
And during this time, we could...
No, you're fine.
So that's one of our next steps, too, if we're given direction to pursue this, is we come up with any program administration elements to the VHDZ? So are there any local criteria that we'd like to include? For example, in Milwaukee, they require that buildings be LEED certified to receive the VHDZ incentive.
So we could bring back examples of other criteria from other sources?
Yeah, I don't know that I feel prepared to say yes on this criteria, no on that. I mean, I don't have enough information. I share Counselor West's concern that we don't want to rub an open wound, so to speak, in Villebois, and it seems kind of soon after the issues that have arisen to start talking about specifics, so I would, I don't mind staff doing additional research, you know, putting, you know, bringing together different information that the council will need, but I don't know that I think we're ready to really debate that yet. So how this timeline plays out, and especially since there's no specific developer waiting on the city to say yes or no, that it seems like it gives us a little more latitude at this point in time, and I might be in favor of taking a little more of that latitude as staff is starting to move this forward. Doesn't mean I wanna say, don't do it, it means, you know, let's do the background kind of and lay the groundwork, but not put a drop-dead date on it at this point, is kinda how I'm feeling. I'm seeing some nodding heads.
Well, I don't get a vote. So we listen to you, and then we execute what you tell us to do.
Others? Do we want staff to pursue, you know, pulling together these...
The request is very specific, I just wanna be clear that the request is that we send out the notices that we're moving forward, right?
Yes, that would be the next step, to send out.
If you don't, if you're not ready to do that, what I would suggest you do is maybe take a timeout, is there any reason why we have to send out those notices right now? Is there, is it only once a year that you can apply for these?
No, whenever we're ready, so whenever we wanna proceed, we send out the notices.
So if you want more research, tell us what research you want us to do, we will bring that back, and we'll have more conversation.
Can we do more community outreach with the Villebois residents? They live there now, it's way past the, what the original thought was gonna be, can we listen to them?
What do you mean, it's way past the thought?
Well, we have the, we've been planning for this to happen for a long time, and there's been roadblock, 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 and now the people that live there are having real concerns and wanna have a voice again on how that's developed, and maybe engaging them again somehow with some citizen involvement, taking a step back, slowing down, might be a way to try to like not rub salt in the wound, re-engage the community, and just kind of slowly ease back into how we move forward with these properties. I think it would be, I think it'd be appreciative, I think it would like maybe lower resentments or anything that could be down the road, maybe harder in the beginning, but in the long run, it might be the right way.
Okay, I think I understand, and I could envision a process in which we did a open house kind of a thing, and maybe show examples from somewhere, multiple places across the country where this kind of community has these components, and it works like this, and this kind, I mean, we did a lot of that kind of work at the outset with Villebois when we were trying to get our heads around what we really wanted to do, and I know Mr. Kadleb has a lot of background and probably reference material on that kind of thing. Staff would have to feel comfortable with, you know, engaging, you know, and it's not a matter of wanting to provide a forum for people that are upset, but in trying to start talking about what are the elements of community that we value, and why was Villebois designed this way? I mean, that's a time-consuming thing, I understand that, but we've had an extraordinary event here in Wilsonville also.
So you had some visitors at a council meeting not too long ago, a couple of folks from the Village Center came, spoke to you. I've scheduled a meeting with those individuals, as well as a group of their neighbors, to come and meet with city staff after hours one evening in early June to begin to have that dialogue about the master plan intent, about what the Village Center is all about, and to begin to lay a foundation and have a community...
So that's a start, I mean, that's a start down this road.
So we're working on that right now.
And maybe until we do that start, we don't really know how many more steps are called for. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right, I think that's where the, well, the council is at this moment.
Does that give you what you need?
So it sounds like we'll be doing a little bit of outreach and...
Yeah, and some background work, and Mr. Namsoo, do you have a clear?
Yep, yep, I do.
So Chris, could you also reach out to Northwest Housing Alternatives? Make a phone call there, I can't remember the fellow's name, I have his business card at home. Just see, see what they can offer as well.
We'd like to have them help with equitable housing, the equitable housing project in general.
You're gonna start that conversation anyways, this might be a place to start that. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're a little late, so why don't we call adjournment at 7:12, and we'll reconvene downstairs, hopefully within five minutes, and we'll do goals during the main meeting then.
Sounds good.
Okay.